Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to the meeting of the Borough Council. I am first required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public watching from home. Our council has been working extremely hard through this pandemic to keep services running and our communities safe, closely following the law and the advice and guidance from our Director of Public Health and the government. Despite the coming of the so-called Freedom Day on the 19th of July, protecting the health and wellbeing of our workforce, members and residents remain a top priority. Restrictions eased and life returning a bit closer to normal for many, but not for all of us. It is clear that the current high prevalence of cases across the borough, the region and the entire country, has resulted in the large number of close contacts being required to self-isolate, which is placing pressure on some of our council services, as well as many of our local businesses, employers, and particularly within the hospitality sector. We must be able to keep services running regardless as to whether or not rates of cases increase further. We must prioritise services that protect our most vulnerable in our communities. This is why we must be careful, continue to follow those aspects of social distancing and compliance measures, in the hope that we can return to business as usual and as quickly as possible. This is why this meeting of the council is again taking place in the main hall here at Temple Park Leisure Centre. It is prudent for council to continue, sorry, for continuity of services, that we must continue to ensure that the social distancing measures are still appropriately observed. And we urge all to comply with COVID hand, space and face guidelines during this meeting. I would ask members, staff and members of the public attending that they should wear face coverings at all times unless they are exempt. I would please ask that we follow the one-way system to move around the hall if necessary. Toilet facilities are in the corridor just outside the main hall. If the fire alarm sounds, please leave the room by the emergency exit doors to my left and make your way to the main car park. Staff will assist you with this. Any member who wishes to speak on any agenda item should use the microphones available to them. This is to ensure everyone in the hall can hear you and that residents viewing the meeting via the live stream can hear everyone talking. Please note that each desk is equipped with an individual microphone and some simple instructions on how to use and operate it is available to you on the desk. To ensure that the sound system is effective, members must switch on their microphones using the button when speaking. Ensure they are close to the microphone when speaking and they speak directly into it. If a member does speak during the course of the meeting, they should pull down their face masks while speaking and return it after addressing the meeting. Can I take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting and we should at all times demonstrate good conduct? We all have a collective responsibility to live up to the standards expected of us as councillors and community leaders. As per the council procedure rules, a councillor who speaks will not accuse anyone, be it a member, officer or otherwise, of improper motives or use offensive expressions or unparliamentary language. All of the procedures under the council procedure rules apply. This includes waiting for me as chair to give permission to speak. The only exception to this is the requirement for members to stand whilst speaking. In order to assist with sound quality and audibility, may I ask that all members remain seated at all times during the course of the meeting? Given the size of the room that we are observing social distancing measures, I would ask members, staff and members of the public to please try to limit disturbance whenever possible. Members should mute their microphones to reduce feedback and background noise, which will make the meeting easier to follow. Please, may I ask everyone to ensure mobile phones and electronic devices are silenced during the meeting? Members are reminded that full council today will only deal with the business that is set out on the summons as per the council procedure rules. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by physically raising their hand and being invited to speak by me as the chair. When a councillor speaks at full council, they must address the meeting through the mayor and all other councillors must remain silent while another member is speaking. As per the council's procedure rules, if the mayor stands during any debate at full council and any member speaking at that time must stop immediately and the meeting must be silent. When members do speak and because of the size of the room, I would ask that all members identify themselves for the benefit of any member of the public or press who may be observing the meeting before speaking. Voting will be managed by the Monitoring Officer and Strategy and Democracy Officers miniting the meeting. If an item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked whether the member agrees or wishes to abstain. In the situation where there is any dissension voice, a vote will be taken. If an item requires a vote, the Monitoring Officer will either ask for a show of hands or will read out the name of each member in turn in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote. Each member will need to unmute their microphones before speaking to keep their arms raised until the vote is concluded. Once a member has given their vote, their microphone should be muted again. The Monitoring Officer will record the outcome of the voting and announce it at this meeting. I will now ask each member to confirm their attendance by undertaking a roll call and ask all participating members to please reply present. I have apologies from the following councillors: councillor Boyack, Bell, Dean, Dick, Duncan, Huntley, Keegan, Kilgaw, McCabe, McHugh and Strike; councillor Amor.
Present.
Councillor Atkinson.
Present.
Councillor Barclay.
Present.
Councillor Best.
Present.
Councillor Brady. Councillor Brister.
Present.
Councillor Dick. Councillor Dix, sorry.
Present.
Councillor Dixon.
Present.
Councillor Donaldson. Councillor Ellison.
Present.
Councillor Flynn.
Present.
Councillor Forman, I do have apologies for, I'm sorry, I left that off. Councillor Foster.
Present.
Councillor Francis.
Present.
Councillor Gibson.
Present.
Councillor Hamilton.
Present.
Councillor Hetherington.
Present.
Councillor Kennedy.
Present.
Councillor Leesk.
Present.
Councillor Malcolm. Councillor N Maxwell. Councillor NE Maxwell. Apologies, okay, thank you. Councillor Melling.
Present.
Councillor P Melbourne.
Present.
Councillor Peacock.
Present.
Councillor Porthouse.
Present.
Councillor Proudlock.
Present.
Councillor Punchin. Councillor Purvis.
Present.
Councillor Roberts.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Stonehouse.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Traynor.
Present.
Councillor A Walsh.
Present.
Councillor M Walsh.
Present.
Councillor Welsh.
Present.
And councillor West. Thank you. The first item of business is the declarations of interest. No declarations of interest have been received. Does anyone now wish to make verbally a declaration of interest before we move on to the next item of business? Councillor Malcolm?
Oh yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I would like to declare my disposable procurement interest as a director and chairman of South Tyneside Homes in respect of item four, theme six, South Tyneside Homes operations and motion three on the order paper. I've been granted dispensation by Standards Committee on the fourth and the ninth twenty, which allows me to stay in this meeting, participate in all decisions and participate in any vote taken on these matters.
Thank you, councillor Malcolm. Is there anybody else that wishes to declare an interest? No. If you have a disclosureary procurement interest in an item which may prevent you from participating in the debate and the voting, you will need to leave the hall during the discussions of the item. Once the item has been considered, an officer will come to get you and bring you back into the meeting. The next item is the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of June. Are they accepted as a correct record? Yes, councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring a couple of points up on the last meeting and the minutes where the lead member councillor Ernest Gibson was talking about the antisocial behaviour and the abuse. I would just like to ask councillor Gibson, if the presentation he put over, does it cover domestic abuse whilst under the influence of alcohol and also...
Excuse me, councillor Roberts, can I just stop you there? I would prefer if you got in contact with councillor Gibson outside this meeting.
Well, this is about the minutes, Madam Mayor, so I don't realise how we can stop the speaker when it's about the minutes. When it's about the minutes, how can you stop us when I'm discussing something about the minutes?
Excuse me, councillor Roberts, I'm speaking. It isn't on tonight's agenda. All we ask for was to note that...
Well, I'm just asking if I can clarify something on the last meeting, that's all I'm asking. Why can't that, this has come to be clarified?
Can I just point out to you, councillor Roberts, the minutes are for confirmation as a true record only. They are not on the agenda for debate or to deal with matters arising.
So when I want to bring something about the bullying and antisocial behaviour, I'm not allowed to do this in full council about the minutes of the last meeting? Yes or no?
I'm sorry, councillor Roberts, I've already clarified the position.
So what's the point of bringing the minutes in if you can't discuss them? Is there any point whatsoever?
Yes, there is a point, councillor Roberts.
Have I not got the right to ask about the minutes? Yes or no? It's absolutely ridiculous when we can't bring something up about the minutes.
Right.
That we want clarified.
Right, councillor Roberts, the minutes are there for clarification only and they're just there for the members to accept they are a true record.
Well, I'm asking if something is, because I cannot see something in there that should be in there, that's all I'm asking.
As I've previously said, there is no discussion on the minutes. It's just there for a correct record. If you have a question for councillor Gibson, address it to councillor Gibson outside of this meeting.
Well, I don't think that's right. I think if we've got to bring something up, we should be allowed to bring it up. Yet again, you're sitting there protecting people again.
Excuse me, do not talk over me when I'm talking.
But you're talking over us.
I think, under the code of conduct, you need to look at rule 25 under the procedure rules, councillor Roberts.
I've just asked if I can speak onto councillor Gibson and clarify a couple of things, that's all I've asked. If you don't like the truth, that's fair enough.
Excuse me?
I'm just saying, if you don't like the truth, that's fair. Where did you get them last flowers from?
The minutes, councillor Roberts, offer accuracy only and there's no discussion...
Well, I'm just asking if I can put something in there that's clarified, that's all I'm asking. Nothing more?
Please, can I have councillor Roberts' mic muted, please?
Yet again, the truth hurts. Something you don't know nothing about, do you? Where did them last flowers come from again?
Councillor Roberts, if you continue in this manner, I will have you removed from the meeting. It's not speaking the truth. The minutes aren't open for debate. They're just there for accuracy. So can we move the, councillor Dix?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got Mr Mansbridge and Nicola Robertson on the stage of their piece. Could one of those give a satisfactory answer to councillor Roberts? Because he's just going to stand and shout at you all night if you don't. They can explain the situation much more professionally than you can, with all due respect, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, can I just ask you, we have been shouting at you. I haven't been shouting at you at all, flower.
Please, could I have councillor Roberts removed from the meeting? Can I move that councillor Roberts is removed from the meeting, colleagues?
Yes, for speaking the truth.
Would somebody like to second that?
We know that you're a compulsive liar, how you can sit up there? Where them last flowers come from? You're a compulsive liar, you're a resident.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, councillor Dix, for that, but I did have all of the relevant information here from legal in front of me.
It's just that, you know, he's sitting there shouting the ball at you, which he has no right to do. We've got two senior officers here who could have answered that question and maybe has moved the progress on, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, councillor Dix. Can we record the rec, sorry, the minutes as a correct record? Thank you. The minutes are agreed. The next item on the agenda is mayor's announcements and communications. I have two announcements this afternoon. I am required to declare that a vacancy has arisen in the Cleeden and East Bolden ward, namely the seat which has been occupied until recently by former councillor Geoff Melbourne. The council will now proceed to publish a notice of vacancy without delay and take all necessary steps to arrange for that vacant seat to be filled by the way of a by-election, which is required to take place no more than 35 working days from the date of notice, from the date of notice is published. I would like to inform you that a letter, both from myself and the leader of the council, was sent to our twin town Wuppertal in solidarity with regards to the devastating flooding in Germany. Our thoughts and prayers are with all those who have and continue to suffer. The next item of business is to consider a report of the corporate director of regeneration Environment and Environment, which provides an annual update on sustainable South Tyneside. I will ask councillor Gibson to formally move the report. Councillor Gibson?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. In July 2019, the council declared climate change emergency. They pledged to take all necessary steps to become carbon neutral by 2030. A part of the declaration, the council committed to provide an annual update report and highlight the progress of the actions being taken and addressed regarding climate change. The council's Sustainable South Tyneside Strategy Action Plan sets the foundation providing a platform of collective action and shared vision, supporting the ambition of a cleaner, greener, low-carbon and resilient future. South Tyneside, established in 2018/19, the baseline year which all future carbon emission reported would be measured against. The council baseline started at 17,140 tonnes of carbon dioxide, which is CO2. To support delivery of emission reduction, the council set interim target of reduction of 25% within three year, which will be March 2023. A 50% reduction in the fifth year, March 2025. Our strategy developed around 11 key themes, focus and work to reduce carbon emissions across the council services. The strategy also recognised our role as advocates and influencer and champion of carbon neutral future for all. The key pieces of work, Madam Mayor, I may like to highlight some of the pieces of work that has been and has been delivered across the borough. The Viking Energy Centre in Jarro is an 11 million, 11.8 million renewable energy scheme, the first of its kind in the UK, extracting water from the tine and converting it this into heat and energy. Then we have Heaven Mine Waters, an eight million pound energy scheme. This is unique scheme will provide sustainable heat source from extracting heat from a former coal mine seam. The Holborn site is the largest of our planned heating network scheme, seeing the establishment of energy centre generating both heat and electricity to deliver in heat buildings across South Shields. The council has successfully secured eight million under the public set decarbonisation scheme to fund 26 decarbonisation projects, which includes the installation of energy efficient pumps, replacement of gas boilers, LED lights upgrade and installation of solar PV and building fabric improvements. Middlefields has seen the installation of a solar PV system, supported on-site electricity generating. Further plans on the site include the installation of a wind turbine, which will charge batteries. This is waiting for planning permission. From April 21, the council moved its electricity contractor to a full clean renewable energy supply. Street lighting continues to be a key priority for the council with the replacement of sodium street light to LEDs, delivering significant reduction in carbon emissions. delivering significant reduction in emissions. The new waste transfer station at Middlefields. The construction of the new recycling facility at Middlefield is now complete. The facility allows up to twenty thousand tonnes of blue bin material to be delivered locally, reducing vehicle emissions by four hundred tonnes of carbon. Then the new facility also designed a rain harvesting system, which the council uses on vehicles, as well as generating electricity through solar panels installed on the roof. The borough continues to see expansion of electric vehicles charging points across the borough, supporting the transition of a cleaner and more sustainable form of travel. There are currently forty-five charging points installed across the borough, with a further ten being installed within the next few weeks. The council has also introduced three new electric vans into its fleet and has future plans to increase significantly in the coming years, working closely with South Tyneside Homes. Tree planting is a key part of the council's approach, using nature-based solutions to remove and store carbon emissions from our atmosphere. A recent tree canopy assessment has been undertaken across the borough, highlighting that average coverage is sixteen percent, which exceeds the UK standard of coastal town, which is fifteen percent. In two thousand and eighteen nineteen, the council planted five thousand three hundred and thirty-two trees and in two thousand nineteen and twenty, a further three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one trees. We continue to strive towards plant three thousand trees per annum and looking at the opportunity to present more trees during the Queen's Jubilee Comet, Canopy Coverage Initiative. Two cents. The council has developed an urban forest web map. This initiative map will highlight much air pollution, trees which they are removing and how much stormwater is being diverted and how much carbon is being stored. The council is supporting partnership projects to create additional mudflaps and salt marshes along the banks of the tine. The Tyne Estuary project will allow mudflaps to develop and salt marsh plants to grow. There may be no greater threat than facing our younger generation, the climate change. We must listen to their voices of the children and young people who will inherit the significant challenge faced in relation to climate change. We have developed the climate change toolkit specifically for schools across South Tyneside. The school toolkit provides schools with necessarily, necessarily support and guidance to identify and develop their actions that brings real change and support reducing in carbon emissions while enhancing the natural environment. The council has successfully secured five point four million funding for green homes grant. The funding will be used to upgrade one thousand one hundred and twenty homes across the council stock at a range of improvements, decarbonization measures, including triple glazing, roofing, cavity wall insulation. The procurement side recently produced a procurement strategy, clear and aligned with the council's ambition of neutrality future, promoting delivery of local stability and economic development and environmental objection through the inclusion of social values. Through the use of social values or process, we are promoting deliver greater environment stability, waste pollution emissions, driving initiatives, driving carbon emissions and reductions while enhancing the environment. Adaptations, the implement of sustainable drainage systems play a key part, helping us to adapt changing weather conditions. The council has successfully installed sustainable urban drainage solutions at Cledon, Sunderland Road, to help rainwater back, reducing flood events and protect people's home. These examples are key pieces of demonstrating the council's clear ongoing commitment to tackle climate change. However, a great deal of work has been done and undertaken, but we still have more to do. Our future plans, the glassworks, the development of the region's first net zero office building, glassworks will implement a high efficiency heat and light ventilation system with the ability to connect to renewable district heating system. A recent successful fund application to the flood and resilience initiative programme, six point four million vested implementation initiatives approach across a number of sites. These include South Tyneside in addition to northeast coastline, Northumberland and Redcar and Cleveland. The project aims to improve the understanding and benefits of marine habitat regarding coastal emissions, flood risks, climate change and biodiversity management, using natural based solutions, including the restoration of tide habitat like kelp, seabeds, oyster reefs and sea grass. As mentioned before earlier, our continued plan is to green fleet and move forward when required, when we have the required infrastructure. As local leaders, we have an important role to play when addressing the impact of climate change. Must, we must work across different sectors and facilities to encourage and coordinate our actions. The council continues to develop that opportunity and will support wider communities engagement, looking at ways to encourage and empower residents and business to participate and act and fight against climate change. Climate change defines its issue of no time. It doesn't work with borders, boundary or politics or parties. It's an issue facing each and every one of us. We must therefore unite and work together to bring real change. We have established a cross-party working group, which will continue to meet on a regular basis to ensure progress against climate change agenda. The only solution to rapid ambition transformation, action by all, we must demonstrate a strong leadership, mobilize communities, business and society to help to address the impact of climate change. We must think local at global. The fight against climate change must be fought by everyone and cannot, if not, it cannot be fought at all. Madam Mayor, I am pleased to advise the council, the work today is showing a reduction in our carbon emissions by two thousand eight hundred and eighty tonnes against the baseline, that we are currently on track to achieve our three-year interim and our five-year target. I ask council to note the content of the report and the significant work the council continues to deliver to tackle climate change emergency facing us all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Bristow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to those responsible for compiling the report. It's fantastic to see some real and tangible projects that'll bring us closer to achieving a carbon-free future. But I have two concerns, one by what's included in the report and one by what isn't. The first I'm concerned about is the use of Regos or renewable, excuse me, renewable energy guarantees of origin as a measure of the council's commitment to achieving net zero by twenty-third.
Can it to you?
Sorry, I'll move closer. As I was saying, I'm concerned about the use of Regos or renewable energy contract guarantees of origin, which were originally introduced as a, as a guarantee that your energy that you buy would be, would have come from a renewable source. The main problem is that Rego is not exactly worked out as intended. There's now a market for these certificates separate from the energy market itself. So it's now entirely possible for energy companies to generate all of the electricity they use from non-renewable sources.
I'm sorry councillor Bristow, I don't know whether there's something wrong with your microphone, but we can't hear you.
Okay. Is this any better, further away or closer or?
It seems to be feedback.
Feedback.
Has anybody got in the mics?
Can I ask, are you asking who's the provider and what are the providing?
No, I'm concerned about, sorry.
Can you, can we answer after the meeting? Can we give you a written response?
I'm not entirely sure because there's two concerns I'd like to raise and I guess so if there's no way you can actually hear what I'm saying then.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bristow. Councillor Stonehouse?
Hello, Madam Mayor. I just think that this is a very detailed report and thank you very much councillor Gibson. I have a couple of questions to ask. The first one, electric vehicle chargers are so much in demand in our borough. Our residents feel they are doing the right thing by buying electrical vehicles, hybrid cars, which we as a council should encourage and support. But they are frustrated by some charging points being out of commission, which takes time to repair. Would it not be better to have multiple EV chargers? I was addressed, I was advised yesterday that Sunderland has a multiple charger of up to eight cars. Obviously, I emphasize that this depends on the amount of land available. For example, Gridserve of Braintree in Essex is a super fast, reliable charging for up to thirty-six cars at the same time. They've built charging infrastructure that can deliver clean energy to everything from cars and motorbikes to buses and HGVs. Gridserve are looking for land to build these EV infrastructures. Now, section forty-one on the environment and biodiversity states your target to plant trees is three thousand, which is commendable, fantastic. Perhaps some are young trees and bushes on newer states. Now, a newly planted tree can take as many as twenty years to capture the amount of carbon dioxide that a carbon offset scheme promises. We would have to plant.
Madam Mayor, is it a question or is it a speech?
No, no, no. My question was, I would like to know how many full grown trees have been felled in the last two years, apart from a small number which are felled by disease and the safety risk. And when you reduce your target by this number, the amount of trees may be greatly reduced.
Can I just say councillor Gibson, members are allowed to speak to the report? So if we can just hear what councillor Stonehouse has to say. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea to donate fruit trees to schools as well of the benefits of our climate and the environment. Unless buying self-pollinating trees, which are expensive, two trees might be better to donate as it can cross pollinate and bear fruit, which will again benefit children. And lastly, on the subject of schools and improvements to children's health, can I ask why we are still allowing idling cars around schools? We are going to all these lengths to reduce emissions, to improve air quality and we still have cars idling while drivers pick up children from school. Madam Mayor, I live near a school whose entrance is on the same road as bungalows. On the school days, parents have their engines idling in front of these bungalows. I am concerned about the poor air quality for the residents, the safety implications for children of accidents and near misses, which I have actually witnessed. Surely we can have some signage to advise drivers to keep their engines turned off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Stonehouse. I'm sure councillor Bristow and yourself could put that in writing to councillor Gibson.
Madam Mayor, one point of clarification which I can add. I do know they are doing air sampling qualities outside of schools and they are addressing the issue, the council is. It's a major issue outside of most schools within the borough and not just one location. It's borough-wide and the council is addressing that.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's really positive to read the report and see the progress that has been made. And I know that obviously South Tyneside council had been moving in the right direction on this issue before the climate emergency declaration, but that declaration in two thousand and nineteen was a clear and public statement of intent, demonstrating our commitment to tackling the climate crisis and giving ourselves a clear deadline of becoming carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Just looking at the news recently, it's clear how important that issue is. We've seen the Met Office issuing its first ever extreme heat warning in the UK. We've seen the devastating floods in Germany and Oman. And if we ever needed a stark warning around our dependence on fossil fuels, we've literally seen the ocean on fire in Mexico as a result of an underwater gas pipeline leak. This all brings the IPCC's deadline into sharp focus. So it's extremely positive to learn that we're on track with our interim targets and therefore hopefully on track to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. It's fantastic to see the serious investment and innovation, including obviously as heard, the Viking Energy Network, Heaven Mine Water and Holborn Energy Schemes. I was hoping councillor Gibson would embrace his inner poet and talk about planting a tree for the Queen's Jubilee, but never mind. I do however wonder if we could be doing more in terms of transport, buildings and our waste strategy. With regard to transport, it's great to hear that there are three new electric vans to be added to the council fleet. I understand we currently have eight, but that's only two percent of the total fleet. So I'm very pleased to hear that there's a strategic approach to developing a more ambitious transition there that minimizes emissions while meeting our delivery needs. I would say that Peterborough council recently announced that their mayoral vehicle is going to be an electric car from now on. And that's a step that I know some other boroughs have taken, including our nearby neighbours in Newcastle. And whilst that would be a very minuscule part of our overall emissions, it would seem like a sensible thing to do in terms of advocacy and sort of banging the drum for the green energy and green transport. I'm also aware that public transport has an important role to play. And last year, we saw the introduction of the region's first carbon neutral, fully electric bus fleet serving Gateshead and Newcastle. And that was a joint funded project from Go North East and the government's Ultra Low Emission Bus Fund, following a bid also supported by Nexus and Gateshead Council. And it would be great to see similar negotiations opened with the bus companies for doing something like that in South Tyneside. So we don't end up inadvertently as a dumping ground for dirty diesel buses. As we know, our borough's motto is always ready, so we want to live up to that. Let's be always ready rather than falling one step behind our neighbours. With regard to buildings, I'll admit to being slightly skeptical about the glassworks development. I've not yet been convinced that a building like that is needed in that particular location, but I'm also slightly cautious about the green credentials of the plan. It's claimed as we've heard that that will be the first net zero office building in the region, but it seems like a strange way to reach that particular goal. If you've ever been in a greenhouse, you'll know that the glass walls lead to spaces that are hard, hard to cool in the summer and hard to heat in the winter. The fabric-first approach to building seeks to maximize the performance of the building materials themselves before considering mitigations, you know, based on the energy and systems that serve those buildings once they're in place. And that can help reduce capital and operational costs, improve energy efficiency and reduce emissions whilst also reducing maintenance costs. After all, the cleanest, greenest and cheapest energy is energy that you don't use in the first place. On buildings, I'm also keen to ask why we don't include emissions from social housing in our reporting. I'm aware that one argument that could be made there is that we don't pay the bills, so it's hard to accurately measure. But what is measurable is thermal performance of those same buildings. And we know that fuel poverty is a very real issue in this borough. Aside from the environmental impact, we need to make sure that South Tyneside Homes tenants live in energy efficient homes in order to tackle fuel poverty and avoid the situation where some people tell us they have to make difficult choices between heating and eating. The council might not pay the bills, but technically it does own those buildings. So we should make it clear to South Tyneside Homes that they also need to reach net zero. Finally, a question on our waste strategy. And it's great to hear about the recycling facilities at Middlefields and that we can do some of that work in our own borough. But would I be right in assuming that emissions arising from the incineration of waste are not included in our reporting because that takes place outside of the borough? In other words, are we outsourcing some of our emissions? Incineration is sometimes presented as energy from waste, but I'd argue that's simply greenwashing. It's sometimes promoted as an alternative to landfill, but according to Eurostat, in ten years up to twenty sixteen, the amount of waste incinerated increased by thirty percent. And then the last ten years, CO2 emissions from incinerators have doubled. So it's thought that more than half of what's currently incinerated could have been recycled or composted instead. But instead of that, we're using incineration to burn valuable resources that could have otherwise had a better environmental outcome. Incineration is also proving to be a barrier to improving recycling rates and it creates a need to replace those resources at a high environmental cost. And I think it's much better to be mindful of the four R approach to waste, which is reuse, sorry, reduce, reuse, recycle and replace. To summarize, it's very encouraging that we've had some significant early wins and are currently on course to achieve our target. But let's be both realistic and ambitious regarding the action we take going forward. Let's be honest about ourselves, sorry, honest with ourselves about what's truly green and might, what, what might. and what might be described as greenwashing. And let's be ambitious enough to build on our achievements so far with genuinely green changes that are needed to protect our communities and protect our future.
Thank you, councillor Francis. I'm sure councillor Gibson will get back to you all because obviously we couldn't hear councillor Bristol.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an observation, I'll keep it brief. The work and words of councillor Gibson are fully supported and I think it's encouraging for everybody in South Tyneside that work is carrying on. However, I think it's something that needs to be considered due course when talk of developing green belt land is brought up. That these factors are taken into account, otherwise a good work and to some extent will be taken away by development on green land. So it's just an observation when discussions do talk about future green belt developments, in particular the ward I represent, Caledon Eastbourne, that all these environment factors are taken into consideration.
Thank you, councillor Foster. Is the report noted? Sorry, councillor Hamilton, I didn't see your hand up.
Again, I'll be quite brief here. Thank you councillor Gibson for the report. It's quite a good-
Could you pull your microphone?
Sorry. Is that better? Yeah, it's a good and quite comprehensive report. I've just got a couple of brief questions, if that's okay. I say this coming from a place of not knowing very much about heat pumps or geothermal drilling, but a quick Google shows that there are some concerns around earthquakes and things like that. So I'm just wondering what kind of measures we will be putting in place to ensure that doesn't happen. I'm sure like myself, councillor Gibson, as a former miner, will know that there's massive amounts of mine work and seams under the town. And I wouldn't like to see them causing problems. And as I say, I don't know enough about it to know, so it is just a question about what we will do. And the other part, and again, just a question, I was interested in the stronger shores section. And I was just wondering, and you probably won't be able to come back to me now, on what kind of things would be happening around, happening around South Tyneside with regards to the stronger shores. I know there's quite a few different things mentioned there, but it doesn't say what would be happening in South Tyneside. And I'd just be keen to know a little bit more about that as obviously a large part of the coastline is in the ward that I represent, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Gibson, would you like to respond?
Yep. Councillor Hamilton will give you a written response on the drilling in the foundation. And I think a number of members would like to know the same information. So we have the experts in there, Morsum, so I will ask Morsum to give all members a response on that. The Stronger Shore Habitat Protection Coastal Communities involves restoration of subtitle habitat from coast protection and its associated benefits of carbon caption, biodiversity and gains improvement to water quality. So along the coastline, you will be seeing the alternatives of oysters, kelp and sea grass, which improves the resilience of the water. But I will give you a written response further.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Is the report noted? Sorry, councillor Atkinson, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, it was just to, if you don't mind, just, I just wanted to pick up a few things. You'll be pleased to know I haven't got a speech. Right, I just want to make sure that people do understand this is significant progress against the realistic target that we put in place in twenty nineteen, which was the twenty thirty deadline for the council to become net carbons neutral. So I think we're making great progress. We know there's more to do. We all have a part in that, actually. We want to take our community with us. We want to take our businesses and our residents with us. To that end, we're already working hard with schools. As councillor Stonehouse mentioned, schools have had fruit trees. We've given them school toolkit to do work with the, with the school community and with the parents to see what more they can do in their own localities. I think as someone who represents Caledon Eastbourne, we, you know, absolutely see firsthand what the effects of climate change and the extremes of rain can bring. We now have more than one hundred and thirty homes better protected in Caledon as a result of the investment from this council, working with the environmental agency and the Regional Flood and Coastal Committee. But there's more to do. I think what's really interesting as well, Chair, Madam Mayor, sorry, is the natural, nature based solutions that we're also implementing. So we've heard a lot about, you know, the energy network, the mine workings, et cetera. But it's the nature based solutions that we're already putting in. You know, biodiversity increase at the, at the shore, as councillor Gibson said, on the River Tyne, where we have, at the shore, where we have kelp and potentially oyster beds being developed. I think this is all to increase our biodiversity and I think everything that we can do with regard to making our environment, which is a wonderful one in South Tyneside, you know, keep it that way and work hard to get it. So I commend the report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Atkinson. Thank you everyone for your contribution. We move on. The next item of business is to consider a report of the corporate director of regeneration and environment on the council's support for retail and hospitality sectors. I will ask councillor Mark Walsh to formally move the report. Councillor Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity to present this report to the Borough Council. There is no doubt that two years ago, it is unlikely that any of us could have envisaged the COVID nineteen pandemic and its impact. Two years on, we have seen the devastation that the virus has had on family, friends and the wider communities people have succumbed to COVID nineteen. The business community has been significantly hit by the lockdowns and various iterations of restrictions that have been put in place to curb the spread of the virus. At different points, central government has put in place measures to help mitigate against the more severe financial aspects of the restrictions, such as the enforced enclosure of hospitality and retail. At South Tyneside Council, we are and have been committed to doing everything we can to support the business community during the pandemic and importantly, into recovery. We know that businesses across South Tyneside, particularly in retail and hospitality, have endured months of uncertainty. This report highlights the steps we have taken as a council to ensure that funding has reached those who were eligible as quickly as possible. Whilst the report tells us that the council has administered over forty million pounds worth of grants to businesses within the guidelines provided by government, this figure has actually been looked at again. Suffice to say that the true figure is actually higher and the council administered just over fifty million pounds worth of grants. Before I proceed any further, can I place on record, thanks to all of our officers and staff who have made the administration of these financial schemes possible. From a standing start, new processes have been set up at extremely short notice and often implemented in a matter of a week or two, so that local businesses could be supported as quickly as possible. It was certainly no mean feat, so a big thank you to them. I'm aware that the council has not been able to provide help to every business financially, largely due to the criteria and the parameters set by this government. I can attest to this as our friends who have their own businesses who are excluded from the government's financial support schemes. So I can sympathise with those people who were ineligible because of the government's criteria. However, we have supported those businesses that have been and are in scope for government funding. At the same time, we have listened to businesses about how we can use any discretionary grants that might help those firms who are out of scope of the government's criteria for the grant funding. We have continued to monitor and direct resources where they are needed within the parameters that have been set by government. A recent example is that after the delay in stage four of the roadmap out of restrictions that put things back to the nineteenth of July, further financial support has been provided to hospitality businesses that continue to be impacted by social distancing restrictions, limiting the number of customers in venues. The additional restrictions grants have been made available for up to two hundred and sixty three businesses in the hospitality, events and accommodation sectors. Grants have been two thousand pound and four thousand six hundred pound per business with commercial premises have been made available during July of this year. In addition to the grant support, we have fast tracked applications from, from businesses for permanent and temporary pavement licences and waived the one hundred pound application fee. To encourage footfall in South Shields Town Centre, we have introduced free parking in council owned car parks and on street parking spaces covering all day on Saturdays and after midday Sunday until Friday, Sunday to Friday until the thirty first of August, twenty twenty one. The council has also launched a publicity campaign to encourage residents to support the area's retail and hospitality sectors. Our new team of business and community support officers and environmental health officers have been out and about engaging with venue, engaging with venues across South Tyneside, offering advice and assistance. Over the past two weeks, the council has been working closely with businesses in the hospitality sector to help them get ready to fully reopen as safely and as smoothly as possible. This includes offering advice and support to their staff and customers on how best to adhere to the guidance on hands, face, space and fresh air. The vast majority of our businesses continue to comply with the guidance and advice, which will ultimately help them to protect their customers and staff and minimise disruption to their business. Whether people are enjoying social interactions again with a drink or a meal at a cafe, a restaurant or a pub, we continue to do all we can to support our hospitality industry to recover from the pandemic, working hand in hand with them so that their customers have the confidence to visit premises and feel protected. Madam Mayor, I commend this report to council and note that this council continues to support businesses across the borough through our post-COVID economic recovery plan. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Walsh. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Hamilton?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. The hospitality industry is a sector that is very close to my heart. My mother was born in the West Oak pub and grew up in the Marine, a pub that my grandfather supposedly still haunts. She was also the longest serving shop steward that in the nineteen eighties got an increase in salaries for staff in the hospitality sector of ten pound per week over the, what was at the time, the wage council levels. I worked in the hospitality sector and my family members have worked in the hospitality sector. Growing up in South Shields, the hospitality industry was a vital and thriving part of our town. People came from all over the region for a night out in South Shields. And I know young people won't believe this today, but people actually came from Newcastle for a night out in South Shields. So the hospitality industry in South Tyneside has been struggling for quite some time. It's not just to do with COVID and I'm not blaming the council in any way, shape or form for that. Before anybody thinks that I am, it has been struggling and things have changed over the years. So what I want to say is how we're going to support this hospitality sector and this industry going forward. It should be one of the jewels in our crown. We've got a fabulous coastline, parks, it's an amazing town, it's an amazing borough. And we could make tourism a great industry here with the help of the hospitality sector. But I'm concerned that we're not doing enough to support them. I'd be interested to know how many, how much of the forty million pounds of grants that went to local businesses went to businesses in the hospitality sector. I'd also be interested to know how long they waited for those grants because some of them have closed and will never open again. Going forward, I have concerns that we are planning on building family homes right next to where the main hospitality businesses are. And those hospitality industry organisations, those businesses have raised their concerns with me. And would like, I'd like some reassurance because a large proportion of them are in Beacon and Bent, the ward I represent. And I'd like some reassurance that something will be done to make sure that they don't suffer because of complaints of noise when those houses are built. I'm going to finish with a message I was sent today from an owner of one of the businesses in my ward, who said, what I will say is that we are grateful for the financial help that was issued from central government. I don't believe the communication has been as successful as we would have hoped. That said, it has improved. I think a lot more could be done to assist in the recovery. Cut price advertising on King Street screens, business features across the social and web digital platforms. Even a meeting to discuss how we could recover from this would help. So on behalf of those businesses, I'm asking that we will listen to them and talk to them and put support in, not just for them to recover from COVID, but for them to become the jewel in the crown of South Shields and the borough that they once were, so that we can begin to attract tourists to this town in the numbers that actually we deserve, so that we can build and grow our economy in a way that will help the whole borough. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Walsh, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I mean, of course, as councillor Hamilton knows, we're in the throes of the, looking at the refresh of the South Shields Town Centre regeneration plans. We are positively looking to engage much more with businesses, particularly in the hospitality sector. In terms of the specific question, in terms of how much actually went to the hospitality sector and how long it took them, to be honest, that would take quite a significant amount of time for the, for the team to investigate. After all, there were eleven different schemes that I'm aware of that were implemented throughout the pandemic at different points, which includes hospitality, the leisure section and retail. So that is a significant amount of work, but what I'll certainly do is go back to our head of economic growth and ask if it's possible to clear the information and share that information with members.
Thank you, councillor Walsh. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Hamilton's taken the wind out of my sails a little bit because I was going to raise some of those very same points. So thanks to her for doing that, so I don't have to. I know we both met with a number of, a number of business owners who work in the hospitality sector last year and it was clear that they were, they were very much struggling with, you know, just keeping their businesses afloat. So it's encouraging to hear that from their point of view, things have improved and that there's some constructive ideas about how to move forward there. In terms of the wider support mentioned in the report, it was interesting to see a change of heart, obviously, over town centre parking charges. And that does seem to be making a contribution in terms of footfall in the town centre and hopefully in terms of, you know, whether those businesses are able to kind of make ends meet going forward. But in light of the previous agenda item, I'd also like to ask what we could do to encourage more non-drivers to travel to our town centres, so including improvements to our cycling infrastructure, but in particular, increasing and improving bike storage facilities. We've also previously heard about electric vehicles, but of course, the greenest option isn't more electric vehicles. It's to have fewer vehicles on the roads altogether and for that, we need better alternatives. And it's interesting to see the news this week that the leader of Newcastle council has called for a low flat fare on buses in the Newcastle and Gateshead area. Many of our residents in South Tyneside don't drive and car ownership is quite low in the borough. So we need to be sure that we're also making it as easy as possible for those people to get to the town centres and spend money in the local economy. And I'm aware that bus companies are their own sovereign enterprises. But if Newcastle council can call for this, surely we can too in South Tyneside.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Dixon, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just, just a couple of comments just with regard to the grant scheme that was implemented, just to give councillor Hamilton a little bit of reassurance. As soon as the officers were aware of the schemes and soon as they got the guidance, those grants were paid out as quickly as they could possibly have been paid out to all of the sectors that were eligible for the grants. And then there was other additional grant schemes, sorry, that was implemented just following that. So, you know, some companies that did miss the, or fell through the loop were actually implemented through this additional scheme. So just to give you some reassurance, unfortunately, not all businesses could be helped. But we ensured where we could and where the parameters fit, those businesses were supported. And with regard to the incentive, with regard to the car park, and councillor Francis, that was an initiative that we wanted to lead on as quickly as we possibly could. And I totally agree, the footfall within the town centre in particular has increased quite dramatically through this. And this is about how we can support our businesses and get the economy back up and running in South Tyneside. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Councillor Walsh, do you want to come back on anything? No? Madam Mayor? Sorry, councillor Atkinson, I didn't see-
Thank you. I think, I think councillor Dixon might have forgotten to mention as well that we have actually been out and met some of the businesses. We were down at the seafront just a couple of weeks ago. We've been out in Jarrow and Heben talking to some businesses. Clearly, it's very difficult to get round them all. It's a work in progress, but any feedback that people can bring to us is also useful, of course, because we don't have to, we probably can't meet everyone personally. But it is something we're aware of. We've worked hard with the communications team with regards to the banners that we now have on the lampposts. Eat local, shop local, be safe while you do so. We're looking at better signage for the market in the town centre. So we are very, very focused on supporting- very focused on supporting our businesses best we can. It's obviously still, unfortunately, a work in progress, but anybody willing to help us and feed some information, very welcome to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Is the report noted? Sorry, councillor Walsh, do you want to come back?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, there was just one point I just want to say, just in terms of what councillor Francis was saying, in terms of the town centre and people being able to get around. This is something that obviously has been looked at from our local level. We have local bus forums that work with the transport companies in terms of the bus fares, but importantly, in terms of the request via the leader of Newcastle City Council, obviously, this is something that we need to look at regionally through the joint transport committee. We already have a regional transport plan, which is looking at all of these aspects, including active travel and public transport. And ideally, if we can get it into a situation in public transport where we can have a flat rate similar to what they have in London, but unfortunately, in London, they have a regulated transport system which we don't, then it is in the gift, but it should be done on a regional basis between the seven local authorities in the North East region. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Walsh. Is the report noted? Thank you. The next item of business is to consider a report of the acting head of paid service to amend the membership of a council committee. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, one small change to member appointments has been requested. The report sets out the necessary change for council to agree, which relates to the constitution committee, and a change for the substitute member for the South Tyneside independence group. Colleagues, we are asked to agree that councillor Paul Milburn replaces councillor David Kennedy as the substitute member for the main opposition group on the constitution committee. Madam, may I move the report?
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak? No? Thank you, the report is agreed. The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received under this rule. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under the council procedure rule nine. Five petitions have been received under this rule. I will explain the procedure to follow for each petition. As per the council procedure rules, we will not debate the petitions today. After the petition has been presented in accordance with the process set out in our constitution, I will move that each petition be referred to the appropriate body. Petition one. Councillor Francis, I understand you wish to present this petition to full council. Please read the wording of the petition and announce the number of signatories. In accordance with the standing, sorry, in accordance with standing orders, I propose that the petition stands referred to the head, sorry, I've gone on. Sorry, that's my fault.
That's fine.
Councillor Francis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
If you would like to present the petition, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I've received a petition requesting that the council resolve parking issues in Harbourview, South Shields. The petition contains 28 signatories, all of which are from the borough.
Thank you, councillor Francis. In accordance with the standing orders, I propose that the petition stands referred to the head of infrastructure and transport as the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded? Is that agreed? Thank you. Petition two. To urge South Tyneside council to stop felling trees to improve pavements. The petition has 1,094 total signatories, 390 are from within the borough. In accordance with standing orders, I propose that this petition stands referred to the head of infrastructure transport as the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded? Thank you, is that agreed? Thank you. Petition three. Councillor Proudlock, I understand you will present this petition to full council. Please read the wording of the petition, announce the number of signatories. Thank you, councillor Proudlock.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have received a petition which contains 31 signatures, all of whom are from the borough, requesting the council to close the entrance stroke exit at 97 Newcastle Road into Hyperion Avenue.
Thank you, councillor Proudlock. In accordance with the standing orders, I propose that the petition stands referred to the head of service for infrastructure and transport as the appropriate officer for consideration. Is that seconded?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is that agreed? Thank you. Petition four. Supporting the more lane walking and cycling scheme. The petition has 665 signatories, 493 are from within the borough. In accordance with standing orders, I propose that this petition stands referred to the head of infrastructure and transport as the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Is that agreed? Thank you. Petition five. The petition to stop parents, sorry, patients and staff smoking in McInnany Avenue next to the bus stop. We have received a petition with 85 signatories, and 85 of those people live within South Tyneside. In accordance with, in accordance with the standing orders, I propose that this petition stands referred to the head of environment as the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded? Thank you. Is that agreed? Thank you. The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule 10. Four motions are to be considered under this rule today. I will explain the procedure for motions. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion, and he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may speak up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion, the motion then will be open to debate by members, who may each speak up to three minutes and may move amendments. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Dean, Peacock, Strike, Kilgawa and McHugh. Councillor Peacock, please present the motion. I'm sorry, councillor Peacock, we can't hear you, your mic's not on. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We were contacted by the Jarrow MP, Kate Osborne, to ask for it to be brought before South Tyneside council to note the consistently high rate of poverty across our borough, and to recognise the growing concern amongst health and care professionals and the likely exacerbation of poverty across the North East due to the COVID-19 pandemic in 2021. A right to food campaign was set up in our local authority area of South Tyneside, following the lead of Liverpool and Manchester authorities, who have already signed up to get the right for food as part of the government's National Food Strategy. We have also received pledges from a number of local companies and from five established food banks based in South Tyneside, battling the campaign for the right to food. This council motion will call for the right to food to be incorporated in the government's National Food Strategy, with the aim of identifying the food system we should be building for the future, with a plan of how to achieve that vision. If the motion passes through council, it will see South Tyneside join Liverpool and Manchester as a right to food area, and the campaign will work with supporters and partners nationwide to bring more towns and cities on board. Working with the MP's office, we have put together the wording for this motion, which is signed by five signatories. I will now read out the proposed draft motion, which hopefully will be backed by all members. Motion for the right to food. This council notes that, one, we are seeing a crisis of food poverty born out of the political choices and systemic failings created over the past four decades, which have now reached a tipping point for so many in our communities. The figures are devastating for one of the richest nations in the world and highlight the inequality of the UK in 2021. The Trussell Trust reports a soaring 81% increase in emergency food parcels from food banks in its network during the last two weeks of March 2020, compared with the same period in 2019, including a 122% rise in parcels given to children as the coronavirus pandemic continued to unfold. This council notes the consistently high rate of poverty across our borough. We recognise the growing concern amongst our health and care professionals of the current situation and the likely exacerbation of poverty figures through the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and economic uncertainty as we enter 2021. Before the pandemic, around 800 people per year access South Tyneside council's local welfare provision that provides short-term non-cash support. From April 2020, South Tyneside council has seen around 2,300 people access its coronavirus hardship fund, which has provided vouchers that could be exchanged for cash through the paypoint network. This means that South Tyneside council has effectively seen an increase of 187.5% in applications for hardship support since the start of the pandemic. The Department of Work and Pension data shows a 59% increase in unemployed working-age adults claiming universal credit in South Tyneside from February 2020 to April 2021. The National Food Strategy is the first independent review of England's entire food system for 75 years. Its purpose is to set out a vision for the kind of food system we should be building for the future, and a plan for how to achieve that vision. It is headed by Henry Dimbleby and next reports to the government in the next month or so. The Right to Food Campaign is arguing that 11 million people in food poverty should be central to this strategy. Ensuring the right to food in the law would clarify government obligations on food poverty and would introduce legal avenues to hold government bodies accountable for violations. This council resolves too. The council calls for the right to food to be incorporated into the National Food Strategy, and we ask the council leader and chief executive to write to Henry Dimbleby, the independent chair for the government's National Food Strategy, to further this request. Signed, councillors Dean, Peacock, Strike, Kilgawa and McHugh.
Thank you, councillor Peacock. Is the motion seconded? Councillor Mellon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm seconding this motion because of the sense of outrage I feel that here in the United Kingdom, the sixth richest economy in the world, around 11 million people, including children, may go to bed tonight hungry. It's easy to condemn people for their obesity and unhealthy diet, but what we should be doing is supporting people to live healthier lives. The government has absolved itself from the responsibility of the quality of what we eat and has placed it on the shoulders of the consumer under the guise of personal freedom. This handily ignores issues such as poverty, choice, availability and other factors which lead to unhealthy diet choices. We eat more ultra-processed, unhealthy food than any other European country, and that food is getting relatively cheaper and more deadly year by year. Diets high in sugar and salt increase the risk of heart attack and stroke. The levy on the soft drinks industry led to a reduction of sugar content in fizzy drinks. A new tax on sugar and salt would similarly encourage food and drink manufacturers to reduce the sugar and salt content of everyday food. The report also recommends extending free school meals to more children and making fresh fruit and vegetables more readily available. It also points out the connection between our diets and the farming industry, which is currently facing great challenges. Does the government recognise any of this? No, it does not. It won't levy extra tax on sugar and salt. It won't extend the free school meals provision. It won't prescribe fresh fruit and vegetables. It prefers to do shady trade deals with Australia and the United States instead of encouraging the consumption of British meat, fruit and vegetables as part of a healthy and environmentally conscious diet. There is a nutritional gap between rich and poor, and the less well-off you are, the more likely you are to eat unhealthy food. Nutritious meals are vital in keeping us all healthy and resilient, and government must prioritise the public's health, giving everyone access to healthy and affordable food. The National Food Strategy provides some pointers in achieving this goal, but it must be underpinned by the acknowledgement of the right to food and the legal powers to hold the government to account. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mellon. The motion is now open to debate. Does any member wish to ask questions or speak or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to those involved in drafting the motion and bringing it to full council tonight. I fully agree, it's utterly shameful that in one of the richest countries in the world, we have so many people living in food insecurity and food poverty. And to make matters worse, many of those accessing food banks are not just those out of work, but also the working poor. And this seems especially perverse when 12 months ago, the chancellor was helping pay the bills of those who could afford to visit restaurants through Eat Out to Help Out. And as the motion notes, all of this is a consequence of policy choices. As I've said on several occasions before, to anyone who listen and to quite a few people who don't want to listen, the whole situation may well be yet another argument in favour of a universal basic income, but I certainly support the intention of this motion, and I hope we're all supportive of it here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Peacock, do you wish to reply? To the debate?
No, you're all right, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is the motion agreed? Thank you. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Kennedy, Francis, Roberts and P Milburn. Councillor Thompson, please present the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Many local authorities are moving their council meetings to evenings. This encourages greater public accessibility and participation in local authority business. I've got a list, Stafford, South Staffordshire, Litchfield, Cambridge, Branford, Bromley, Barnet, Tower Hamlets, Lewisham, Westminster, is linking, the list goes on, and it's growing significantly. Currently, in South Tyneside, other than full council meetings, we only have eight community area forum meetings that are held on an evening each year. This is from a total of 194 CAFSON committees, which could be considered for evening schedule. We, as a council, need to improve this situation. Accessibility to council committees and community area forums for both residents and members is crucial to openness, transparency and accountability. We need to ensure that both residents and members who are in full-time work are not facing an unnecessary obstacle to their involvement. As a council, we should ensure no unnecessary obstacles exist that may discourage residents of the borough from actively engaging in the democratic process or standing to become a councillor. I propose the establishment of a cross-party workgroup working throughout 2021/22 and reporting to and reporting to annual full council in May 2022. The report to annual full council in 2022 will include recommendations for selected committees to be scheduled on evenings for 2022/23. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Is the motion seconded?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I second the motion. We reserve the right to speak later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kennedy. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Best?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak to the motion. If I could start by explaining that my perspective is as the officer in South Tyneside Council formerly who was responsible for democratic engagement in committee meetings, including the community area forums. And from that basis, we conducted extensive and intensive work with the communities of South Tyneside in their community settings. So we went to them and asked what the communities wanted, what the barriers might be. So I do have some concerns about the way the motion's been crafted because it does contain some assertions that really do need to be validated, tested and proven to make sure that we're not creating a situation where we include a new group of people at committee meetings but exclude a different group of people and to get that balance absolutely right. I think to say that many local authorities are moving their community area forums and committees to evening meetings is absolutely correct, but there are still many councils who don't find that to be the correct approach for their communities because one size simply doesn't fit all. And I would also just clarify that we already do have flexibility based on that in-depth work over many years that was done to, you know, change the timing of community area forums and other committees to suit the individual community so they can be varied by negotiation with the chairs, the vice-chairs and the members of the committee. We also do currently have the capacity to hold special meetings on special occasions for special consultations if we need to at a time that suits the most people in that particular community or area. So really, my concerns are that the assertion that automatically moving to evening meetings is going to improve participation, it could actually exclude a huge group of people who aren't working full-time, including people, for example, who have childcare commitments, caring commitments for relatives who are dependent. It could exclude shift workers or people who just don't like to come out in winter dark evenings. And that was one of the common themes that came across when we did this intensive and extensive work. And the resounding and unequivocal outcome of all of that engagement work to determine the best time for committee meetings was that there isn't a perfect time for committee meetings, and that's why we built that flexibility in which we still currently have, to my knowledge, each annual council to determine the timing of meetings. In terms of committee meetings themselves, and looking around the room here, we can see the level of infrastructure, the formality, the tone of the meeting, which we've had quite a lively meeting so far, are not always the best vehicle for democratic engagement. A lot of the time in meetings like this, the public are observers, they're not active participants. So we must remember that the democratic process isn't, it's not an event or a meeting, it's something that we should embed. And I think this council does embed, because I know that from the work that I've done with a lot of the officers in this room tonight, through everything that we do, from the moment you become a councillor, the conversations you have, we should be asking the public what works for you, what will make it easier for you to engage in this democratic process. In terms of engaging new councillors and existing councillors, there is already provision in law for councillors to be given time off work for public duties. That is in law. And there are also councillors allowances that offset the need if you need to take unpaid time off work. So there are provisions for councillors who need to manage that balance. The other concern I have is that there are some assertions made, and in even the resolution itself, it presumes that the recommendations will include evening meetings, and that's before the cross-party group has met. So I'm not comfortable with assuming that that's what the outcome of that cross-party working group could be. In terms of making council meetings welcoming and inclusive, I think we also need to be mindful of our own behaviours. People watching this meeting tonight or previous council meetings look at whether they would feel comfortable being a councillor based on the environment that they would be expected to work in, should, you know, that be the outcome of an election. There are also some resource issues, human resource issues and obviously cost resource issues that we must address in this time of extra pressure on council budgets. Officers already have a long working day, and it would fundamentally change their working contracts necessarily or their work-life balance. And we would still expect, and the public would expect, that councillors would be working during, sorry, council officers would be working as well during the day and be able to answer and deal with the business that comes by. So there's a huge challenge there, which sort of worries me when we say at paragraph five in the motion that there is no reason not to phase further forums and committees to an evening schedule. I think for the reasons I've identified so far, I have lots of concerns that there are lots of reasons why we can't assume this to be the right way forward, and it needs to be looked at in that context. And finally, really just the assumption that we're not an inclusive, transparent and open democratic council, that actually upsets me quite a lot because we are and were seen as an exemplar when it comes to this type of engagement. We have councils who came not just from this country, but from even New Zealand, places like Brighton and Hove, who came and asked us, how do you do this? How do you get the people to engage? And the answers we gave were that it's not just about the community area forums. We go, we stand in fields and we talk about democracy, we explain what all of the different mechanisms are that people can engage with, with the council. And it is petitions, it's putting questions to council at meetings if you can't attend. It's making sure that, you know, we're not excluding people by moving from one set of situations to another. And I do have real concerns about, it's more, I think, the crafting of the motion, which seems to me to be to a degree fundamentally flawed in that respect. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Best. Councillor Hamilton?
Yes. I was elected in May 2018 and since then have asked repeatedly for the community area forums that are sit on to be held on a rotational basis and for some of them to be held on an evening, not all of them, but some of them. I've been told that's not possible, even though other community area forums do. Councillor Best is quite right in when she says that people are entitled to request time off work from their employers, but as a councillor, your employer is entitled to refuse you that time off. There's no legal requirement for them to give you it if they feel that it's not within their business interests. It's quite easy for people like myself, who work in the public sector, to get time off for council meetings, but I recognise that in the private sector, that's not quite so easily to do. However, like, I work for a council where they do have evening meetings. And yes, council officers do have to work late. My flexi time band is seven in the morning till ten at night, and I could be expected to work at any time during those hours. But it is flexible working for a reason, and that's so that meetings can be held in the evening and people can go take time off to make up for that during the day. But like councillor Best, I have some major concerns about the way this motion has been crafted, because it does say to establish a cross-party working group, I have no problem with that, working throughout 2021 and reporting to annual full council in May 2022, I have no problem with that. Where I do have the problem is the report to annual full council in 2022 will include recommendations for selected committees to be scheduled in evenings for 2022/23. As councillor Best just said, that is for, that is coming to a conclusion before the work, the cross-party working group was even met. What I'd like to suggest is an amendment, and I don't know whether people will support this or not. And the amendment is leaving that first line about the cross-party working group working throughout 21/22 and reporting to May 2022, but that the next sentence is deleted and that a sentence is to replace it is inserted, which says something along the lines of, and I'm making this up off the top of my head, so please bear with me, that the working group will carry out consultation with elected members and the public to establish proposals for alternatives for holding committee and community area forum meetings, which may include scheduling some meetings in the evening if that is what the results of the consultation determine is what people want, or something worded better than that, I could probably write it down better than that. But something that says basically that we have a consultation, we see what people actually want, and if people want evening meetings, then we do introduce some evening meetings. So that's the amendment that I would like to propose, that we don't predetermine what people want, but that we carry out a consultation to see if that is what people want.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. But usually when you're making an amendment to a motion, it's common practice within this council to table it. So other members have seen it when you're tabling it?
It actually, it states somewhere in here, I've read somewhere in here that it says you can put forward a motion, an amendment, and I did so at the last meeting. And we've had that tonight.
Yes, I will clarify that for you, councillor Hamilton. The proposal contained in the protocol is guidance. But nonetheless, I'm satisfied that the amendments can be moved. But it, you know, just to give everybody the opportunity, because we could all sit here and make an amendment to a motion, but it's to give everybody the opportunity to actually read that amendment. So it's not set in stone, but, you know, it's common protocol. Okay, councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going slightly off-piste here, and I'm aware that if we've had an amendment proposed and that hasn't been crafted in advance, and we might not therefore be clear on what that amendment is that we're voting on because it was just off the cuff, so to speak. I'm going to talk slowly so that councillor Hamilton can maybe write it into a sentence, but I was planning to speak on this anyway. I was asked to support this motion, seeking to make meetings more accessible for members of the public and also potentially attract a more diverse group of people to consider standing for election themselves. So not just those who can easily attend multiple committee meetings during the working day. And like councillor Hamilton, I'm in a fortunate position where my employer allows flexible working and I work flexi time. And although I could request leave in order to attend meetings, that isn't usually necessary for me, and I'm aware that that's a privileged position that not everyone finds themselves in. We've seen in the last year or so that engagement from members of the public has been quite high while meetings were taking place online, and it was just removing some of the barriers that people might face in terms of taking an interest in local democracy. And I think that was positive. But I certainly recognise the points that councillor Best raises in terms of there being no perfect time for meetings to take place. And of course, you know, it would be just as flawed to have all the meetings in the evening as it is to have them just all during the day, if not more. But I do think it's sensible to try and strike a better balance if we can. And I'm aware that the current wording of this, the resolution part of the motion might seem to put the cart before the horse in terms of creating a working group but already having the outcome in mind. But I do think it's important to look at how we might make these meetings more accessible for elected members and the public alike. So a working group tasked with exploring the options seems perfectly reasonable to me, even if it might raise questions about what time of day that working group would meet. Yeah, I was wondering myself, listening to the comments made by councillor Best there, whether it would be worth trying to look at taking an amendment from the floor in the meeting. And I don't know if councillor Hamilton's finished writing it yet, but I'd be keen to hear it because I saw a lot of sense in what was said there.
Councillor Hamilton?
Yes, I think I've got wording, that the cross-party working group consults with elected members and the public to identify options for making meetings more accessible to the members of the public, which may include holding evening meetings in some circumstances.
Does anybody second that motion? Councillor Francis?
I'll second it, yeah. Could I speak, Madam Mayor?
Just a moment, please, councillor Thompson. You can now respond, councillor Thompson, to the amended motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. Thanks for everybody's input. I'm sorry councillor Best saw assertions and implications throughout that motion. It wasn't the intention. It was ultimately to develop inclusivity. Some of the concerns councillor Best had is something I did look at and found a Chamber of Commerce report on an EU study, which was the most recent substantive document I could find, which confirmed that it ranges between 61 and 77% of people are working on a daily basis, 40 hours, nine to five broadly. So the numbers do support it, but I do agree also local public consultation should be a key part of that. As far as councillor Hamilton's verbal amendment, I think that just about fits, and I'd be happy with that. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Is the amended motion, which is now a substantive motion, agreed? Would you like to speak, councillor Malcolm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been an amendment, I'm sorry, but there has been an amendment moved. Okay, so we have to take the vote on the amendment first. And if the amendment is agreed, then we go for the substantive motion.
Right. I'm being advised that the amended motion becomes the substantive. That's what I've asked to be voted on, councillor Malcolm.
On substantive motion, right, okay.
Okay. Do you want to do this by show of hands?
Move a show of hands, chairman, Madam Mayor.
Right. What's been voted on, ladies and gentlemen, is the amended, which is now the substantive motion. So if we do it by show of hands, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So elected members, yes, in the first instance, will try and seek a decision with just a show of hands, please. So everybody in for, voting for the amended motion, which is now a substantive motion, can you please raise your hand? Everybody against? And is anybody abstaining from the vote? So that's 29 are against the amended motion and eight are for the amended motion. So that has been ruled down against.
Motion three has been submitted by councillor Thompson, P Milburn, Roberts, Kennedy and Francis. Councillor Thompson, please present the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our council has a responsibility to its residents and their care and wellbeing. At no time is this more significant than when a death occurs. To further assist during the period of a bereavement, South Tyneside Homes will continue to build support mechanisms to alleviate the various pressures on its tenants at this time. Currently, South Tyneside Homes treat every bereavement on its merits and work with families to assist with the difficult task of clearing South Tyneside Homes property. What unfortunately is not presently in place is a grace period where families can know that additional pressures of accruing rent are not a further worry. The motion proposes that the leader of the South Tyneside Council will write to the chairman of South Tyneside Homes and ask that a procedural guidance document covering bereavements of occupants of South Tyneside Homes covering bereavements of occupants, occupants of South Tyneside Homes properties is established. Also that the leader of the South, of South Tyneside Council will write to the chairman of South Tyneside Homes and ask that an impact report on the housing revenue account is carried out in relation to establishing a grace period on rent accrual for up to 28 days from the date of a bereavement of a South Tyneside home resident. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Is that motion seconded?
I'll second the motion, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Milburn. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Sorry, can you hear? Is that okay? You may have to bear with me, they're not my usual reading specs, so. Yeah, in many local authority tenancies, a grace period at the death of a tenant to allow the clearance of the property is available but is discretionary. This is probably one of the most stressful times that close families have to face during a lifetime, the loss of a loved one. To help families manage through the stressful period, I feel reasonable to consider how we can better support them. As a starting point, we would need to at least understand the financial impact and practicality of such an arrangement with a view to the establishment of a guidance procedure to alleviate all worries and surprises during this already difficult time. Given that many South Tyneside Homes properties require repairs before being re-let and these works will obviously have no planned timing attached because of the bereavement, then, excuse me, then many of these properties are not re-let for a number of weeks due to unplanned works. Due consideration could be given for some of this time standing empty to be absorbed for this, by this proposed grace period. For the reasons outlined, I think it's right to give your support to this motion. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Milburn. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Malcolm?
Move an amendment, Madam Chairman. I'm moving, I'm moving an amendment to the notice of motion and it is as follows. To remove all the wording after established procedural guidance documents for bereavements and replace it with established procedural guidance document for bereavements. Council notes that South Tyneside Council is responsible for housing policy in relation to homes managed by South Tyneside Homes, including the policy in relation to paying rent for vacated properties after bereavement. Council notes that this forms part of a legal document, namely the tenancy agreement. Council acknowledged that currently South Tyneside Homes treat bereavement cases on its merits and work with families to assist with the difficult task of clearing homes managed by South Tyneside Homes. Council resolves to review the policy regarding their properties managed by South Tyneside Homes of establishing a grace period of rent accrual for up to 28 days from the date of bereavement. Council also acknowledges that this will have a financial impact in relation to the housing revenue account. Council therefore requests the leader of the council and struck the corporate director for business and resources to carry out a financial assessment regarding what impact the grace period of rent accrual for up to 28 days from the date of bereavement would have on the HRA. The reasons for the amendment, Madam May, is that whilst we can understand what the motion is trying to achieve and the reasoning behind it, it is unfortunately, as previous motions to this council this evening, it's unfortunately fundamentally flawed. Firstly, it is South Tyneside Council who owns the properties managed by South Tyneside Homes. South Tyneside Council is the landlord. It is the council who make the policy concerning all aspects of their properties. Therefore, any request or demand for a change in policy has to be directed to the chief executive of the council, who because it would be a potential or a political decision, would have to refer it to the leader of the council. Secondly, the housing revenue account is not controlled by South Tyneside Homes. It comes under the auspices of South Tyneside Council. Thirdly, as a point of information, the managing director of South Tyneside Homes is the chief administration officer and all correspondence should be referred to him. So I'm moving this amendment to correct the flaws in order that the sentiments and the spirit of the original motion can be maintained and recognised so that the requests are addressed to the correct bodies. That is that the council reviews the policy regarding a grace period of rent accrual of up to 28 days from the date of bereavement and that the corporate director for business and resources assesses the financial impact on HRA on such a change in policy. On another point of information, Madam May, it's my understanding that there will be quite an impact on the housing revenue account and that no other housing organisation has such a policy that this motion seeks to introduce. I think that a quick calculation is about 108,000 going by last year's vacancies due to bereavement. So I move the amendment, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Malcolm. Councillor Thompson, would you like to respond?
Needs to be seconded, Madam May.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. Could I ask if that amendment is seconded?
Madam May, councillor Walsh, yes, I would like to second it if I could. I'll just keep it just very short and speak, so I'm conscious of time, Madam May. Obviously, as councillor Malcolm has pointed out, it's, the motion is critically flawed. I'd like to also point out we have a responsibility both to our tenants and also as a council to manage our finances effectively. And I think this amendment to the motion adopts a very practical approach to this and will ensure that we get the best results for our tenants at a very difficult time. Thanks, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Walsh. Councillor Thompson, would you like to respond?
Happy to take a vote on the amendment, thank you.
Sorry?
Happy to take a vote on the amendment.
Thank you. Is the amended motion, which is now the substantive motion, agreed?
Agreed.
Motion four has been submitted by councillor West, McCabe, Dix, Taylor and A Walsh. Councillor West, please present the motion.
Thank you, Madam May. Last but by no means least, this, this motion before us in effect is in effect a reaction to a particular element of the planning bill which is currently working its way through parliament. It's worth reminding ourselves that this planning bill was at the heart of the government's Queen's speech. The proposals which have been put forward in what is a very wide-ranging set of proposals have provoked consternation and anger even among government members, some of whom blame them only for the defeat at Chesham and Hamisham. In responding to the fact that these proposals totally undermine the democratic rights that residents currently have in objecting to planning applications, even Theresa May said that this will put the wrong homes in the wrong places and would mean open season for developers. Much of the anger and the basis of this motion is focused on the proposal to, and I quote, remove from local residents the right to object to individual planning applications in their own neighbourhood if the area is zoned for growth or renewal. In June, the shadow secretary of state for communities and local government, Steve Reid, used an opposition day in parliament to debate the motion which is before us this evening. Although a number of Tory MPs spoke in favour, it was passed because the bulk of them abstained. I am asking council to join many other councils and organisations, which is the ZPRA, in supporting this motion as follows. Firstly, we resolve to adopt the following motion and reiterate this point in any future discussion at consultation on these changes with central government. The motion being, South Tyneside Council believes planning works best when developers and the local community work together to shape local areas and deliver necessary new homes and therefore calls upon the government to protect the right of communities to object to individual planning applications. Secondly, to ask the leader of the council to write to the secretary of state for housing, communities and local government, Robert Jenrick, MP, and also to the shadow secretary of state for communities and local government, Steve Reid, MP, setting out our views that residents' voices should be retained within the planning process. And thirdly, to ask the leader of the council to write to both South Tyneside MPs, supporting their support and ask that they raise the issue of the earliest possible opportunity with the government. Thank you, Miss, Madam May.
Thank you councillor West. Is the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Dix. Do you wish to speak?
I reserve the right to speak at a later time.
Thank you councillor Dix. The motion is now open to debate. Does any member wish to speak? Councillor Foster?
John? Thank you, Madam May. As obviously the only Conservative councillor in this room, I fully support this motion. The words, South Tyneside Council believes planning works best when developers and the local community work together to shape the local area. I couldn't agree with it more. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Do you want to respond? Sorry councillor Francis, I didn't see you.
It's okay. Thank you, Madam May. It'll probably come as no surprise to the leadership that I fully support this motion because I got in touch a couple of weeks ago to suggest something very similar myself. So I'm very pleased to see it on the agenda tonight. Put simply, the government's proposed changes to planning law would see rights taken away from residents and the power to object taken away from local communities. And as a Green Party councillor, I strongly believe in truly participatory democracy. Politics should be done by people, not to people. Everyone should have a voice, not just those with the loudest voices, the deepest pockets or the most powerful friends. We already have a planning system where residents' voices can be overlooked and it sometimes seems like the odds are stacked in favour of those who know how to play the game. And even local authority planning committees can be prevented from doing what they genuinely believe to be the right thing for local people and communities. The proposed changes would seem very much to be a step in the wrong direction here and that's why I would urge colleagues to protect the rights of our communities and to support this motion tonight.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Dix, do you wish to come back?
I think everything's been said, Madam May, on regard to this motion and I have nothing more to add other than to recommend and support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor West, do you want to come back?
Just to say, Madam May, thank you to opposition councillors in supporting this. It's really pleasing that it has support across, across the house, as it were. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the business of the council today. Can I please ask that everyone in the public gallery and all councillors, please remain seated. Strategy and democracy officers will call out rows to leave at a time in order to coordinate a safe departure. Can I thank everyone for their attendance this evening and thank you to those watching at home. Safe journey home.